Good evening. Now, call the December meeting of Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. And if you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Kelly, could we have a roll call, please?
Kimball?
Present.
Carey?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Orders.
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present with the exception of Mark Latham, who is excused.
Thank you. Russ, any amendments to the agenda this evening? Amendments to the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda tonight, thank you.
Just a reminder, for those, we do have a public hearing this evening, so if you wish to speak at that public hearing, you need to fill out a form on the podium in the back and bring it to Kelly in the front up here before the public hearing. Any declaration of conflict this evening?
I have a potential conflict on the public hearing.
Okay.
So I'll be recusing myself.
No.
Okay. Everything else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've noticed that the applicant for the public hearing doesn't appear to be in the audience right now.
That's why we were hesitating.
We were just talking about that. I'm wondering about switching the order tonight, handling the appeal first to give the applicant a few more minutes to show up.
Okay. That's fine.
I move to amend the agenda to switch the new business with the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. Kelly, roll call.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Orders.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at the consent calendar. What's your desire?
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kelly, roll call, please.
Hampi?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Orders.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, at this point, we're at the time in our agenda where we're accepting comments from citizens who wish to speak on anything other than the public hearing this evening. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on. Unfinished or old business, we have none. So we're at that point where we will move to new business and hear the Interstate Plastics appeal.
I'm a bit tall for this, but here we go. Introduce myself again, since I'm sort of a new face here. My name's Warren Wilson. I am the new city attorney for Post Falls. Tonight, you're here to hear an appeal from Interstate Plastics regarding an interpretation of city code issued by our zoning administrator. City code charges the planning commission with hearing appeals from decisions, administrative decisions made by our zoning administrator. The appeal tonight comes from Interstate Plastics. They're appealing the city's staff's interpretation of the definition of structure that's contained in the city zoning code. So tonight, your charge is to listen to the arguments from both the city and from the Interstate Plastic and determine whether or not the interpretation of city staff is reasonable. And if it is reasonable, the appeal should be denied. If you don't believe staff's interpretation has been reasonable, then you would uphold the appeal. So with that, let us jump into the code. So, Post Falls Municipal Code 1808080 contains the definitions for the zoning code. Included in those definitions is a definition of structure, and let's read through that really quickly. Anything constructed or erected which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground, among other things, structures may include any type of building, wall, fence, or sign. So from reading through that, you can see there's essentially two parts of that definition, as well as a scoping provision that tells you it's supposed to apply to any type of building, wall, fence, or sign. It's staff's contention that the structures being constructed by Interstate Plastics meet both of those two parts of the definition. The first part of the definition is anything constructed or erected which requires location on the ground. So if we dive into that a little deeper and look at the definitions for construct and erect from the dictionary, construct is to make or form by combining or arranging parts or elements. Erect, pretty similar, to build something by putting together materials. So in theory of the definition, the first half of the definition is, did you put together something by combining parts and elements that's located on the ground? So, let's take a look at these structures. You'll see that they're large steel shipping containers with an attached roof structure that's been attached to them. These are intended to support a membrane structure, so you'd have, once completed, you have membranes over the top of these structures. You'll note they sit on the ground, that they've been constructed or assembled from parts. You've got the shipping container, which is one part of the structure. You've got the roofing portions. You've got the brackets that have attached the roofing structure to the supporting sidewalls that are the shipping containers. You'd have the membranes, which would be another part. So you've essentially assembled or constructed from parts a structure. Here's another angle of the facilities that's being constructed, give you a sense of the scale of what we're talking about. These are fairly large structures. So staff's consideration is that this structure, that these structures that are being constructed meet that first half of the definition. Moving on to the second part of the definition, again, anything constructed or erected, that's similar, which requires attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground. So what's different here is it's attached to a fixed location on the ground. Fixed, in this case, the dictionary tells us fixed means placed or attached in a way that's not easily moved. So, again, breaking down the definition, it's made, built, or formed by combining or arranging parts or materials, and it's a placed or attached in a way that does not move easily. Looking at the photos again, I would suggest to you that anything of those size are not terribly easy to move. They're going to have to be deconstructed, just like any other site-built structure would have to be deconstructed in order to be relocated. You'll note that they're, just a rough guess here, we think those shipping containers are roughly eight and a half feet tall, so the roof structure itself is going to go up to 20, 25 feet plus. They're two shipping containers long times at least four wide. By the time you get the roofing structures on that, that's not an easy thing to relocate. So, staff's contention is that, again, it meets the second half of that definition. Another shot to give you, again, a sense of the site conditions. So, again, staff believes that these structures meet both halves of the definition contained in our city code. In addition to the strict interpretation by the code, we took a look at what does other definitions of structure tell us. We try to interpret all of our codes consistently so that there's not confusion. So, we looked to the International Building Code and its definition of structure, which is up on the board. You'll note that it says a structure is that which is built or constructed. Pretty generic. It's, the commentary in the code tells us that's intended to apply broadly, and it does that so that it brings everything within the scope of the building code to make sure that it's built and constructed safely. Moving on, we look at the dictionary definition of structure. Something such as a house, tower, bridge, et cetera, built by putting parts together usually stands on its own. Again, pretty similar to how staff has interpreted the definition in the city code. So, our conclusion was that the structures as they're constructed certainly meets the definitions. It meets both halves of the definition, meets the definition contained in the IBC, it meets the definition contained in the dictionary. So we feel that the staff's interpretation, the city's interpretation of the definition of structure contained in 1808080 is reasonable. As such, we think that the appeal should be denied. With that, I'll answer any questions. Stick a photo up there in case you have questions about it, what it looks like, so.
Question for staff.
I've got a quick one, Warren. Does the, we don't require a building permit for the, like, the little carport structures? You know, like, you know, when they're talking about the kind you can get at Walmart that have the tent canopy kind of thing?
Potentially. There's an exception based on size, and if you have questions, we can have our handy-dandy building inspector come up, but there are exceptions based on size of the structure.
Okay. And, could, yeah, I would like to know what that is.
Justin Miller, Building Fish for City Post Falls. For residential, it's 200 square feet, and for commercial, it's 120. They don't require permit for accessory structures.
So what about the kind of wall tent-type carport thing that you can buy at, say, Walmart that has a steel frame structure?
Most of those are all under 200 square feet, so we haven't addressed those because they're all fairly small. I mean, 200 square feet's, you know, obviously, like, 10 by 20, so it's a pretty large structure.
Okay.
Go ahead, Fred. So, structure is something that's placed on a piece of real estate, is that correct?
Under these definitions, yes.
Okay. So if I'm a business owner and I have a large 20 by 30-foot tent that I'm going to put on my property and I have to use stakes to hold it, that means it's actually physically held to the property, correct?
Potentially, yes. Yeah.
So, but we don't need a permit to use that, to get that type of tent on a piece of property, is that, is that correct?
If it's under, if it's under the size limitation, sure.
Okay. If I look at these containers, even though they're large containers, but I don't see that they're physically attached to the property, they're just simply sitting on that piece of property. So I guess I'm having some issues about being attached versus...
So, again, going back to the first part of the definition, it says located on the ground. It doesn't say affixed to the ground. The second portion of that definition says in a fixed location. It doesn't require that the structure itself be physically attached to the ground, just that it be in a fixed location. It's not easily movable.
So if this, if these containers had wheels, they would be able to be moved, so that means they would not be fixed to the property, is that correct?
I think they'd still fall under the first part of that definition because they've been placed on the ground.
Okay. And I, the other question is, I guess if they had the equipment to put, to put the containers there, they probably have the equipment to simply pick them up and move them three or four inches if they wanted to.
They could, but you'd have to tear the whole thing down first. You've got all of those roofing supports that are attached to the structures, that not only are attaching to an individual structure, but there's two shipping containers back-to-back, so you're tying all of those things together in a structure.
Okay, so the other question I have is, would they, should they have asked or requested a permit then for these structures?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that's, and that was in the staff report, that's how we got here.
Okay.
We began construction and staff found it, met with the applicant, and requested that they submit for a permit. Ultimately, the site was red-tagged, and that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Warren?
I don't know if it's much of a question, but I had to bring my handy-dandy IBC with me, and I made a photocopy of one of the definitions. And, of course, you have structure, and you listed that under the IBC. But also under the IBC is the definition of a tent, and I'll read it for you. "It's a structure, enclosure, or shelter, with or without sidewalls or drops, constructed of fabric or pliable material supported in any manner except by air or the contents it protects." And, I don't know, in this case, it almost seems like that's kind of what that is. I mean, it's...
We're getting a bit far afield because that's under the building code, but it would tell you there's a specific section that applies to this type of structure under the building code. It's considered a membrane-covered frame structure. There's a whole section that deals with that. We can pass that around if you want, but the definition for that is, "A non-pressurized building wherein the structure is composed of a rigid framework to support a tensioned membrane which provides the weather barrier." So, that type of structure is even beyond meeting the definition of a structure, and frankly, a building, under the IBC. There's specific provisions that deal with this specific type of structure under the IBC.
Okay. Any other questions for Warren? Hearing none, then I guess we'll hear, hear from the appellant.
Do you have a PowerPoint or anything? Do you have a PowerPoint or anything? Get that in your way.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Scott Portman, representing Interstate Plastic in this matter. I guess I have to start with a, what I think maybe is a fundamental disconnect between the position of staff that's being presented here tonight and really how this dispute started. And it's important for you to understand their chronology. The shipping containers that you see in the photographs have been on Interstate Plastics' property for decades. And it's our position that they are not part of the improvement that's really at issue. Shipping containers have been there for a long time, and they were permitted when they were originally placed in the distant past. And over the decades, those shipping containers have moved around on the Interstate property into different configurations as suited the needs of, of my client. What's new is just the, what we call the shade canopy. And it was the construction of the shade canopy that triggered the stop-work order being issued by the city and the city saying, "You need to get a permit." So, when I talk about why we're here, I'm talking about just, just the shade canopy itself, not the containers, because the containers have always been there. So the only thing that's changing is this, this arched canopy that's being stretched between shipping containers that have been on the property for a long time. The, I hit the right button. Your code, as Warren pointed out, has this definition of structure that is on the screen and that does have these two parts to it. And, at the risk of insulting anybody's intelligence, I'm going to go through those like we're in the second grade, because that's how I think best. So, if you look at the first part of the definition, anything constructed or erected is the first part of your definition, and that's represented by the blue circle there. But that's not where the definition ends. It, it is more limited than anything constructed or erected. Your definition is really, structures are what's in the green circle. Anything constructed or erected which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground. So the green circle represents your definition of structure, not the blue circle. Your definition's more limited. This remaining blue area represents things that are constructed or erected but do not require a location on the ground or are not attached to something having a fixed location. And we contend that the shade canopies being built by Interstate Plastic fall within that remainder area. Yes, they are constructed or erected. No, they are not attached to the ground or attached to something having a fixed location on the ground. And that's where we have our disagreement with the city's interpretation. According to your ordinance's definition of a structure, a freestanding tent, if it's large enough, would be a structure. A tent is erected, a tent has a location on the ground, and if it doesn't fall under the size exemption, a tent would be a structure, according to your city's definition. But the city doesn't regulate all tents. In fact, there's, probably most tents don't get regulated by the city, either because they fall under the exemption or you just don't care. As I pointed out at the beginning, the shipping containers are not part of the question at issue. Those containers were previously permitted and have been on that property a long time and have moved around a long time. Those containers clearly are not fixed to the ground. So the new improvement that, really what we're talking about, is just the shade canopy that's being added to what's been there in the past. And so the question I'm, I'm struggling with is, what are these shade canopies like? What's a good analogy to these shade canopies? And, best I could come up with, it's like adding an awning to a travel trailer. You attach an awning to a travel trailer, you've erected something. It's not located on the ground, it's not touching the ground, and it's attached to something that does not have a fixed location on the ground. Travel trailers move. And you don't obviously need a city permit to add an awning to a travel trailer. Therefore, awnings on travel trailers are not structures, according to the city's definition. And that makes perfect sense. And Commissioners, there is a common sense component to this. The city code is not intended to regulate everything. There are some things that just don't need to be regulated. Like an awning on a travel trailer, the shade canopies that we're talking about do not require a location on the ground, they don't touch the ground, and the shade canopies are not attached to anything with a fixed location on the ground. And like a travel trailer, these shipping containers can move around, as the name implies. Shipping means movement, relocation. And that's what these are. A shipping container is not a, is not a structure either. These particular containers on Interstate's property don't have any wiring, plumbing, cables, or any other kind of connection that would hold them to their current location. And they might move next summer, as the needs of my client dictate. So, your ordinance, as Warren pointed out, has these examples of things that are supposed to illustrate what the definition of structure intends. Is a structure, are these shade canopies more like a building, a wall, or a fence, which are the examples in your ordinance of a structure? Or are these shade canopies more like an awning on a travel trailer? Now I have to bore you even further with some legal stuff. When a court looks at an ordinance to interpret it, they follow certain rules. The objective overall is to determine the intent of whoever wrote the ordinance or the law. An intent is determined at first from just the plain, ordinary meaning of the words that are used. Courts don't go to the Merriam-Webster dictionary unless the words used are ambiguous. If the words used have a plain and ordinary meaning, then the ordinance is not ambiguous, it's unambiguous, and the courts just apply the plain, ordinary meaning of the words used, and that's the end of the analysis. When an ordinance is ambiguous, when the meaning is doubtful and people with reasonable minds can disagree as to the meaning of the words, then a court will go to outside sources like Merriam-Webster or some other authority to try to determine what the words mean, again, always to derive what was the intent. That's the overall goal. And if the ordinance is so vague that people of common intelligence have to guess at what it means, what it allows, what it does not allow, then that ordinance is said by the courts to be unconstitutionally vague and is void. You know, they send it back to the legislature and tell them to do it again, get it right. It is our position that your ordinance is not ambiguous. It's our position that your ordinance is not unconstitutionally vague. It's our position that your ordinance is perfectly clear, and it means exactly what it says, that a structure is something constructed or erected and requires a location on the ground or is attached to something that has a fixed location on the ground. And our shade canopies do not meet that definition. These shade canopies are not located on the ground, they don't touch, and what they are attached to, the shipping containers, are not fixed to any particular location. Commissioners, these shade canopies pass through a loophole in your ordinance. And I say loophole, not that that's a bad thing. Loopholes are actually good things, because when you find one, you exploit it. And that's how ordinances, laws, get improved. Somebody drives a truck through a loophole, and then the legislature says, "We better close that loophole." And that's how laws get better. Without people exploiting loopholes, nothing would get better. So Commissioners, your ordinance, as it's currently written, does not apply to what my client is erecting. If you want to close that loophole, you have a process to do that. You can suggest an amendment to your ordinance to the city council, and the city council will hold hearings, and they'll vote yes or no and decide whether they want to do that. Or they might decide, "This isn't a big deal. We don't need to amend our ordinance, it's fine the way it is." Because your, your ordinance doesn't have to apply to everything. The city might consider amending your ordinance to be more like the ordinance adopted by the city of Hayden. City of Hayden has a definition for structure in their zoning ordinance, and it reads like this. "An object constructed or erected," sounds familiar, "which requires location on the ground," sounds familiar, "or is attached to something having a location on the ground," including et cetera, et cetera. What's different about the city of Hayden definition and yours is that the city of Hayden doesn't say fixed, it just says location on the ground. Doesn't have to be fixed under the city's, the Hayden definition. Your definition requires it to be attached to something having a fixed location. I didn't write that, that's just what it says. So Commissioners, until the city amends its ordinance, going through the ordinance amendment process, you're stuck with what it says. And until your ordinance is amended, then Interstate Plastics should be allowed to do what they started to do, which is to add shade canopies to existing shipping containers. Now, staff has said that even if the zoning ordinance definition of structure does not apply, well, the building code definition of structure clearly does apply to these shade canopies. The building code definition of structure is that which is built or constructed. And I would submit to you, Commissioners, that a sandwich meets that definition. I'd build and construct some pretty impressive sandwiches. The IBC definition is so inclusive that it essentially absorbs your zoning ordinance definition, and it, and it changes it completely. And according to the IBC, provisions of the building code shall not be deemed to nullify provisions of your local ordinance. So if you're going to adopt the building code definition of structure, you are nullifying your zoning ordinance definition of structure. your zoning ordinance definition of structure, and the IBC says you're not supposed to do that. So we don't really need to talk about the IBC definition of structure. It really doesn't add anything to this issue, or help anybody make a determination with a definition like "that which is built or constructed." Even if you apply the IBC definition and say these shade canopies are structures under the IBC, they're still exempt, because the IBC says permits for shade cloth structures constructed for nursery or agricultural purposes don't require permits. And, in addition to keeping snow off of the pipe that Interstate manufactures, and sunlight in the summer, these shade canopies will also cover nursery trees that Interstate intends to grow underneath these shade canopies. Now, I know what you're thinking, that that's a fabrication, that we cooked that up to come up with an excuse. And that's a natural reaction, because it sounds like one, but it isn't. Interstate has a lot of property out there, and there's some old buildings on that land that are going to be removed in the near future. Interstate's got plans to make some changes to their property. As part of making those changes, Interstate's going to have to do some landscaping. Interstate doesn't want to go out and buy trees when they can grow their own. So Interstate's going to have nursery trees that they're going to nurture and grow, so that in the future, when they're required to do some landscaping, they have their own stock. Okay? So these will be dual-purpose shade canopies. Now, that's an agricultural use, but that's fine, because your ordinance allows agricultural uses in the industrial zone category that Interstate's properties in. Interstate doesn't need any additional permit to plant and grow some nursery trees in containers. So commissioners, I hope I've shown you the other side of the coin here, that what my client is doing falls within a loophole in your ordinance. And that's why they didn't come to get a permit in the first place. They looked at this, and they said, "Here's the definition of structure in the city of Hayden, city of Post Falls, and what we're proposing to do doesn't fall into that category, because we're not putting anything on the ground, and we're not attaching to something that has a fixed location." Commissioners, there's not going to be anybody living or working underneath these canopies. These canopies do not present any kind of life, health, or safety concerns. If one of them collapses, and my client's been assured by the manufacturer and the engineer that they will withstand the snow load, the residential snow load, if one of them collapses, nevertheless, the only thing that's going to get hurt is maybe some trees and some pipe. And my client's willing to take that risk with their own property. It is our position that your department's interpretation of the ordinance stretches it too far, and by going to the dictionary to try to explain or expand that definition, they're defying common sense. And the practical concerns or considerations that we're not talking about habitable space. Not everything needs to be regulated. I don't think these shade canopies need to be regulated. And because they fall into that loophole category, we believe we should not be required to have a permit.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Porman?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Once they put the canopy on there, does not that make it a fixed location? It can't just be picked up and moved then. It has to be taken apart, right?
Yeah, but it still moves. My client has forklifts that will move those.
Well, yes, I understand that, but it would have to be, the whole structure would have to be disassembled, all those, the canopy and everything would have to be removed. So it's, it, once you put that, I mean, right now, you could pick up those, the storage containers and move them. But once you put the canopy on, you can't do that as a whole structure, you're going to have to take it all apart, right? Or they would have to take it all apart to move.
Yeah, they'd have to be disassembled to be reconfigured, but they move.
And then also, being you brought up the thing of the nursery use, is it their intent to continue over the years to use it in that, or just for a short period of time to use it as a nursery use, and then use it just to protect from their pipes and stuff?
I guess they'll use the canopies for that purpose as long as they have the need to.
Thank you.
Brad? Brian?
No.
Brad?
Chairman, would you prefer I do the rebuttal from here or over there?
Over there, please.
Actually, my client, I think, would also like to address the commission.
This is for argument, so.
I didn't understand that Mr. Tipton would not be allowed to speak. We kind of planned on that. It's his business.
Your call. I'd like to hear the rebuttal.
Sure. So chairman, typically, an appeal encourages or invites essentially argument, as opposed to presentation of evidence. I think you've heard argument from me, you've heard the response now. Typically, you would get a rebuttal argument from the city. I think that's typically what you would see. At the end of the day, if you want to allow Mr. Tipton to speak, I don't care, but that would typically come before the rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman? I think in the interest of due process and making sure that the owner has due process, that we do let him speak before rebuttal.
All right. I'm fine with that, the commission's fine with that.
Okay.
All right.
And it is in the form of argument more than evidence, I would say. Thank you.
Can I hand these out real quick, or take them to you and get your name?
My name's Chad Tipton.
Can you have your address for the record, please?
For the business or personal? Both?
Do the business.
The business is at 3375 East Selti Way in Post Falls. I mean, do I, would I take these to her, or?
Yeah, give them. Kelly initial.
I keep one. I have twelve, I have another more.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Interstate has been a family-owned business since its inception. My dad took it over after my great uncle died unexpectedly in the seventies, and he had been the owner until me and my brothers took over four years ago. One of the benefits of my dad now being retired is that he has lots of time to research, and that's how we got here. This is his brainchild, researching laws, researching ordinances, and, I mean, that's where this idea came from. And it is, it's a, if there is anything that would fall into the remaining blue portion from the Venn diagram that Scott presented, something that's, doesn't have a fixed location on the ground, it is those shipping containers. I mean, if you, I can't imagine anything else that goes there. But anyways, and as I bought into his idea, I looked at it too, and, you know, it's Mr. Warren's, like, used the Merriam-Webster, and so I ran with that one. But the adjective "fixed" is describing the location on the ground, not the shipping containers. It's, does that location change? And the way I always was taught is if you can take that adjective, take the definition, place it in the sentence, and read it, does it make sense? Because lots of times, they don't. You know, there's definitions, surely the third one makes no sense when plugged into the definition of structure that the city has. The first one makes the most sense. It's the way you and I would talk if we were at the water cooler. We wouldn't contort a location to be placed or attached, but like I said, the location is what's being modified by the adjective, not the containers. And the other thing that I think that the city is doing is they are attaching, or they are applying the definition post-attachment, where me, the business owner, is I'm planning this, and saying, "All right, pre-attachment, it's a shipping container. In September, it was over in my other parking lot, and then we moved it. On the back of the sheet, you know, there's pictures of that day, as they started over stacked on my parking lot, loaded onto trucks, unloaded, and then placed." I mean, the only thing holding them down is gravity, but there's nothing out here that isn't. And that's how we did it. And if you want to get caught up in fix this, fix that, replace that adjective with something else and see what your thought process is. I mean, if the city had said it has to be in a sunny location rather than a fixed location, that one's easier to get your mind around, because you're not going to talk about shipping containers having pleasant disposition, you're going to have them, are they out in the sunlight or not? And you wouldn't get in the argument from me if the adjective was sunny instead of fixed. But my shipping containers aren't in a fixed location. They've been moved several times, most recently in September, and they'll be here until I outgrow this incremental growth, and I actually have to do, build a building. But in the meantime, as I'm trying to reacquire lost customers and new customers, such that I need something bigger, this was a good choice for Interstate. You could afford it, we can, it's not permanent, which is the other thing, if you look at your definition of structure, you're talking about something permanent, that the next guy, if I sell that lot, the next guy's going to have to deal with it if it's permanent. But this, nobody's ever going to have to deal with this but me. And that's how we came to this conclusion. And one other thing I want to clear up is he's talking like that entire aisle is tied together, and it's not. If, say, we wanted to move a container, it's just 14 bolts to take off, you can hold it up with forklifts, move the container, and then go the other side, hold it up, and so, I still think I could move it in a day. And so I don't know if you, if that affix your opinion or not, but they're not that hard to move. I don't want them to be that hard to move, I want this to be a pathway to bigger. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Warren?
Here's the appeal. Or rebuttal, I should say.
All right, I'm going to try to make this quick. All right, so let's go back to the definition. I think that one thing that we would agree on with Interstate is that the definition's clear. To me, there's no question about what the definition says. We simply showed you that by looking at the dictionary, by looking at the IBC, that the city isn't off on some harebrained approach or attempt to get a building and drag it in, that was a close call. The IBC, the dictionary definitions, help you to see that we're sort of on the right track when we say that this is a structure that falls within our code. So, one thing that Mr. Porman indicated, that there's no question that this thing was erected or constructed. He quibbles over the fact that it's not on the ground. I have a hard time buying that, because they're not floating, they're sitting there on the ground. If you take, if you try to take the shipping container out of the equation, you're doing damage to the first part of this definition. Is it located on the ground? Is it made, built, or formed by combining or arranging parts? One piece of those materials that's combined to make that structure is the shipping container. It's no different than Lowe's sending a pallet load, or a truckload of two-by-fours dropping it off on the site. As those sit there on the site, they're not a structure. You start nailing those together, affixing them, putting them together, they become a structure. They become on-the-ground, built, combined, arranged. So you look at that, they have now attached a roof, they're going to attach a membrane over that, they've affixed them physically to the shipping containers, which are located on the ground. No question about that. The code simply applies. The second half similarly says, "constructed or erected," which requires attachment to something having a fixed location on the ground. Again, those canopies, if that's all you're looking at, they're still affixed to the shipping containers, which are still in a fixed location on the ground. The argument there seems to be, well, they can be moved, but I'd point you to the photos that Mr. Tipton just gave you. Said it'd take him a day to move them, to take the structures off. That's a heavy crane coming in to lift these things up and move them. These are not easily moved items. So to me, it's clear under definition one, they're on the ground, the shipping container is one element, one piece of that that was constructed, put together to form a shipping container. You heard them say that, well, what's the harm? What's the risk? Two, three weeks ago, we had a massive windstorm, we're likely to have one again tomorrow. These sit right next to the freeway. If there's 14 bolts holding these things on, we don't know how well they're attached. Wind picks this up and deposits on the freeway, you have the very real risk of damage to not only Mr. Tipton and his employees, but to the general public. And that's something that the city is definitely concerned about. Finally, with all due respect to Mr. Porman, the inclination, or the indication that these are also going to be used for nursery stocks simply isn't credible. The applicant and his engineer met with city staff to discuss this project, at no point in time was that mentioned, except tongue-in-cheek as a way to get around the code. What he said, and I'll quote for you, "Mr. Dittman, his engineer, his goal is to put some kind of umbrella canopy between them to protect pipe." "Mr. Tipton, well, it's to shade the UV, because the caps we use aren't UV-stabilized like the pipe is." That's the reality. They're in the pipe business, these are here to store pipe. It's really beside the point, because that gets into what the building code requires. But if you look at the definition, it's constructed or erected, there's no argument at that point. They indicated that this is constructed or erected. It's sitting on the ground. That's as clear as you can get. Commissioner Carey picked up on that, that's, these things cannot be easily moved. Even if they can, the first definition kicks in, they're sitting on the ground. I don't know how else to answer it other than that. Happy to answer questions, or we can move on to the next item. I will tell you, as a point of procedure, you're required to issue a written decision, so after tonight, after you vote, whatever direction you want to go, staff will draft a written order, essentially outlining what you said, and that will become the final decision on this point. And so you'd approve that at your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Warren? I do have a question for you. This might be more of a question for Justin, but if they were to stack those containers too high, and put a tarp spanning the gap between them with no arch structure, that wouldn't require a permit, would it?
It might. I mean, it's, that's not what we've been asked to look at. I think for zoning code purposes, it's still a structure at that point. You're combining the parts in a manner that renders it a structure, whether it would require a building, or whether it would comply with building code, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
Brad?
So if the, if Interstate decided to buy 40 tents, and the square footage of those tents was 198 square feet, would they need to get a permit to put those tents between each one of those containers?
It depends on how they're configured, honestly. I mean, if you're.
They're separate, individual tents. They are fixed. They are fixed, they are fixed to the ground by, you take a stake and you nail it in and that holds it down. So that makes that a fixed tent to the ground. So would, would they need to get a permit for that?
So if they're individual tents, no.
Individual tents.
They're going to be below the, the threshold.
But they're fixed to the ground?
Again, that's looking at the definition. It's, are they located on the ground?
Yes, they are.
In this case, and, and we're, there's a world of difference between a tent and an RV and what you're seeing on the ground. We're looking at fairly large metal structures that require-
I, I understand that.
-in placement by a heavy crane.
I understand that. I'm just asking the question, if that, if, if they wanted to do that, they would be allowed to do that. Is that correct under current city orders?
So they could do individual tents.
Okay. The other question I have is, the original, was there a original permit issued to Interstate to put the containers on the property?
That I don't know. I mean, I, I couldn't tell you that.
Does anybody know that answer? Can they answer that question?
Sorry, I was trying to get Justin's attention. For commercial industrial, the square footage for a permit isn't 200, it's 120 square feet.
Okay.
So I missed your question that was planning-related, so I-
Okay, so my question is, was there a permit issued to Interstate to locate those containers on their property?
I know that when they did recently a parking lot permit, they were identified. It was also, as presented, that they've been there for some time, so...
So-
So they're pre-existing shipping containers.
So they were there, they were existing before any ordinances went into place, is that correct?
I, the ordinance was in 1999. I have no idea whether or not those shipping containers came before 1999 or after.
If, if, if they were going to add another container to their property, say, next week, would they have to get a permit for that container to locate that on the property?
Historically speaking, that's been a no for, for a storage container.
Okay, thank you.
The answer to that in some ways, though, is it's almost irrelevant for how they were placed there, is they've taken them as they were placed there, even if you assume for sake of argument that placing a shipping container's okay. They've not just left a shipping container sitting there, they've attached a roof structure to it that's physically affixed to the shipping container. They've done what the code speaks about, they've erected or constructed it, using that shipping container as one element of their, of their structure. The applicant admits that they've erected and constructed this structure. It's not just a shipping container.
If, if they wanted to add a physical, if they, if they poured some concrete on a slab and then build a structure on that concrete next to the container, they'd have to get a permit for that if it exceeded the square footage, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. However, if they wanted to move the container, they have the ability to move the container, so that no longer is a fixed item. And I think that's what this is all about, is it fixed or is it not fixed?
That's only half the definition. The first one is, is it located on the ground?
That's the clarity that, that I think, that I need to understand, is the issue about definition of fixed in relationship to the city ordinance and what my belief would be what a fixed item is.
Sure. So for the first half of the definition, if it's fixed or not is irrelevant. And all we have to show is that they fall under one of the two definitions. It's placed on the ground, it was erected and constructed is the first half of the, the code. It's on the ground, it's erected and constructed.
But it's movable.
Doesn't matter. Under that first half of the definition, whether it's movable or not is irrelevant. The second half is if it's fixed. Again, fixed being, is it easily movable? I submit to you that anything that you have to disassemble, deconstruct, and then bring in a heavy crane to move is not easily movable.
Okay, so then my other question is, if we're going to apply this definition to the containers on the Interstate property, why is the city of Post Falls applying that ordinance to all the types of tents that would exceed the 200 square foot level in the city of Post Falls?
It's apples and oranges, it's a different creature.
But if a tent is, is then fixed to the ground by a stake, that's a structure, it's built, it meets all your, all your definitions.
Technically might, but it's, again, that's not the case before you. Tonight, the case is large metal containers.
Well, it gets, you know, I would disagree because it gets back to what is fixed. And that's where I'm having some challenges with this, trying to really get a handle on this, this definition of fixed.
It, it's, it's the location that's fixed, it doesn't need to be physically affixed.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna shut down the input, and I'm gonna ask the commission for your comments and direction. Start with Vicki.
I just, I don't know, I'm just looking at it as, to me, it's a fixed, it's in a fixed location. It's fixed once it was put there like that, that it can't just be taken and moved without some being taken apart.
Okay. Ray?
This is kind of, it's an interesting one. Really interesting. First and foremost, I appreciate the fact that the staff has, has brought this up. I think, I think if they were to have stacked containers too high, thrown a tarp in between them, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight listening to this. But there's a, an arch in between them. There's some metal stuff holding up that tarp. And that gives it the illusion, I think, that it's a structure. And so, the IBC has a lot of definitions, and I think under the IBC, this could fall into the definition of a tent, as well as a, yeah, membrane-covered frame structure. Now, the city code and the city definition, or in, in the city definition, it says, it likens it to buildings, fences, walls, and signs. All four of those things have foundations. And so, you know, posts are put in the ground, you know, fence posts with concrete, signs, same thing, you know, retaining walls have footings, and same thing with buildings. And in this case, I look at it and then, and I wonder about the risk of life limb. Yes, if they do take off like a sail, they can damage property. That's the same with anything light. If those things were just sitting on the ground, or if there's something light on the ground, that it can take off like a sail in a 50 or 60 or 70 mile an hour wind. I find the, the whole part about the agricultural thing, I think that was kind of funny. Because they're probably really good at making plastic pipe, but they're not really good at growing trees because they don't grow in the dark, in the shade very well. So that's kind of a bogus walk-around to, or try to get around it. But I do think that it falls under the, more closely to the tent definition than it does to a membrane structure definition. And because it's, I, I see it as nothing big, much more than just a wall tent. It's just a big frame. I mean, I've got wall tents that have frames. So I don't see it as, as much different. And yes, you have to disassemble those to move them around, and they're not easily movable, but that's relative. It's easy depending on what kind of stuff you have to move it. And so, if you have a crane, then it's easy. So I don't, although I appreciate the staff coming up and saying, hey, look, we probably ought to look at this, and that they're looking out for the best interest of the public and raising, and raising the question. And I appreciate being able to, to, to look at this. I do kind of think that the, the owner has a pretty good case here.
Mr. Davis?
I think that in these kind of positions, there are these situations and circumstances that come along that allow us to stop and take a look and maybe shake our head a little bit. It's obvious that they did their homework, and I think that, you know, moving forward with this, I think we're going to have to look at definition and maybe do a little bit of restructuring. But I have the tendency to, to agree with Ray, is that, you know, I think there's some definition, but there's a lot of gray area with this, in my opinion.
I, I have concerns about some definitions also, and I, I hope that's addressed at some point in time by, by the city. And they did do their homework, I think both sides did, but there's gray area and there's interpretations and, you know, I, I would hope something like this would not have to come before the council in the future if the proper corrections or definitions such as incorporated into proper ordinances, so.
Okay. Nancy?
I think that they found a loophole or two, and I, I see it as that. I think the city did a great job, but I think that they did their homework and they found a couple loopholes, and, and those exist.
Okay. I think from working in the codes for years, I, I think that the building officials have done a very good job of interpreting what the intent at least is of the International Building Code in determining whether it's a structure or not. Yes, there is both sides to the coin, as, as we've all spoke. So I guess the question becomes for this commission this evening is, do you feel you want to uphold the appeal, or do you want to deny the appeal? And if you deny the appeal, they have other options available to them. That's our decision tonight, is to uphold it as it's been presented, or do we deny it? I would look for some direction or emotion from someone.
Mr. Commissioner, I would, in the case, it's just the Interstate Plastics Appeal of the Building Code definition, I would move to uphold the appeal. And do I need to come, do there need to be any findings or anything like, we just, some sort of, okay, that's it.
Okay.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So Kelly, could we have a roll call?
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Ostermeyer?
Yes.
Borders?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay. Takes care of that. All right. We will move back then to the public hearing side, and we do have one public hearing this evening, North Place Preliminary PUD, P1503 and Subdivision S1502. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask John to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Associate Planner here with the City of Post Falls, introducing the North Place Preliminary PUD and subdivision. The property owner is Snyder Miller Brothers Incorporated, and the applicant is Greenstone Cootney II, and the applicant's representative is here tonight. The requested action is to approve a preliminary PUD subdivision for approximately 167 lot residential development on approximately 39.51 acres. Project location. There we go. Is as you see here, south of Prairie Avenue and north of Pole Line, just east of Idaho, but west of Spokane Street, and it's kind of encompassed by the Post Falls, I mean, the Prairie Falls Golf Course. The project size, as I previously stated, is just shy of 40 at 39.51 acres. The comprehensive plan designation is residential. I apologize, in the staff report, you did see that it was open space quasi-public, that was incorrect. It is designated as residential on the comprehensive plan. Current zoning is R1, single-family residential, and the surrounding land uses are a mix of other single-family residential, R1 zone properties, and a golf course, and single-family residential to the east with some undeveloped lands to the east, of which more than likely will be additional single-family homes. Proposed land use is single-family residential. Proposed density is 4.23 units per acre, and the water provider would be the City of Post Falls, as well as the sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. Here's a look at the zoning of the area that surrounds the proposed project. Yellow is the R1 zoning designation color. So at this time, this, I'd stand for any questions you have from staff at this point, introduction staff at this point? Okay, thank you, John. Oh, one, hold on.
So this would meet the, the, the intent to do the fill-in within the city?
Yeah, this would be considered an infill area. That it's surrounded by kind of other development, other single-family homes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, Commission. My name is Ralph Williams. I represent Greenstone Cootney II. My address, if needed, is 1421 North Metalwood Lane, Liberty Lake, Washington, 99019. So some of the information that I'm going to share today will be kind of an overview, not only of the project, but some of the things you heard John say as well. So obviously, we're here to speak about North Place PUD and subdivision. The project objective is to develop a community that is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods, provide the infrastructure necessary to create a traditional neighborhood that includes tree-lined streets, a walkable neighborhood, park, and open space that may be enjoyed by the residents of North, North Place and the greater Post Falls area. Provide housing opportunities that meet the needs for future homeowners in Post Falls, and as we know per the comprehensive plan, that's a very variation of different home types, price points, and things like that. The project data, the existing zoning is R1. Under the PUD application process, we are seeking R1 PUD with a few exceptions that we'll go over in a second. The total area of the site is 39.5, 39.51 acres. 4.43% of, of those acres will be open space, which works out to 11.21% of open space, and I'll show you that slide where that's at in a second. This will be single-family detached homes, 167 lots with a 4.3% density. And do let me know if you have questions as I go, I can stop at any slide and answer any questions. This map that I'm showing up is kind of just to give you an overview of what the project looks like, how streets are going to come in. We'll have two entryways that will be off Idaho Street going into the project. This next one is a landscape, you can't quite see it close, but that bottom square, that 4.3 acres, that's where we would like to put the park in that location right there. And we've been working with the city, there's various things that could go in the park, but I know you can't quite read it, but there's a list of things off to the right, things like potential splash pads, benches, shelters for eating area, play structures for children that could be there, and we've not quite decided which ones will be there, but we've committed to three of the things that are on that list, and we're working with the city to figure out what is the best need for the city. And so, we'll continue that process as we go down. The proposed site standards, the, per the PUD, what we're requesting is a minimal lot area of 5,000 square feet. The lot frontage, we are asking for 50 feet of frontage. The setbacks through the PUD, front yard, 12 feet from back of sidewalk to face of the front porch. If the home is the predominant feature, then 15 feet from back of sidewalk to face of the house. If the garage is the dominant feature, then 20 feet from back of sidewalk to the face of the garage. The side yard, we're asking for zero setback. Minimal building separa, separations will stay required per the Unified Building Code, which I believe currently- currently is at 10 feet. The flanking street, 15 feet from back of sidewalk, from back of sidewalk or curb, if curb is, if no sidewalk is required. Rear yard, 15 feet from back of property line. We do ask also that no minimal setback. If the back of the yard backs up against a common area, people seem to like that, that open space, and we've done that concept and seem to be received quite well. Sidewalks, we obviously ask five feet from back of the curb with a little five-foot planter strip so that we can plant street trees and put turf in the middle of those just to make the street trees, the street lined with trees, looks really nice, and that's something we've always liked. Our type roll curve will be used through the development. Curb radius at the entryway, we are seeking, we are asking 30 feet. And then when you get into the project, the radius on the curves to be 20 feet, so they shrink down a tad bit there. And per the information we got back, that seemed to be in line with the code and what we've asked at this point with staff. We have reviewed and concur with the staff analysis and recommendations and conditions for the project. The things that have been highlighted in that, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, meets or sees adopted development standards, harmonious with established surrounding land uses, you could see in the slide that was put up above a little earlier, makes adequate provisions for public utilities and infrastructure and services, will not adversely affect the environment within the city and surrounding neighborhoods, and the conditions, as I said before, we do agree with the conditions that have been placed at this point. We do request your approval of the North Place PUD and subdivision, and do appreciate your time to hear us out on our project, and I am free to answer any questions that you may have about the project at this point.
Questions at this point of the applicant?
What percent of your, of the lots will be 5,000?
You know, I'm not quite sure at this point yet. We basically started by basing all the lots on the frontage first, which is something that, you know, it's pretty straightforward. At this point, I don't know exactly which, what percent.
Okay, and you have the park, the public park on Idaho Street, right?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have one. So the side yard, you're requesting a zero setback?
Correct.
Okay, and then it says the minimum building separation is required by Uniform Building Code standards. What is that?
Yeah, so it's 10 feet. So what that means in an example, how you would use that, so let's say we build a structure that was built, and we put that structure, say, a foot off of the property, that would mean the building that would go next to it, it has to be nine feet off of, into their property.
Okay.
So it just means that between the two buildings, there's 10 foot of separation. And that allows room for things like when we put swells sometimes on a yard or something, you may need to shift the building over and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll ask John for the staff report.
So in looking at the proposed project, the Post Falls municipal code speaks to elements of the PUD part of this proposal. And first one is that provides benefits not achievable as normally required within the zoning ordinance. Typically, with a typical subdivision, most often the cases, there are exceptions, open space isn't provided. You get street layouts, and you get lots with no open space. So with the PUD, generally what occurs is the applicant requests some sort of density or concessions as typically provided, and they provide open space to offset that, so, and of which the applicant has provided and met that condition or element. The other one is compatible with the surrounding land uses, both existing and future. So being the fact that everything around it is either a golf course and other single-family residential, it would be considered compatible with the surrounding land uses, both existing and future. And here's where you see the zoning once again, that's around the site. And where you see these large, these are large open areas, that would be the either greens or fairways of the golf course. The third one is conformance with the goals and policies and the comprehensive plan. In the staff report, you've seen where there's merits and how they're, they meet the goals and policy of the comprehensive plan. Once again, the fourth one, the open space, a minimum of 10 percent. They're providing approximately four acres. It would be maintained by a private homeowners association. But as you, the applicant presented, you have those elements that they're going to be saying that they're going to do three of the following list, at least. The design and final design, and also the condition of, with the PUD, you see that staff's saying that that would need to be proposed as part of the final PUD approval, is that park layout would have to be presented as part of the design set. Also, the processing of PUDs that includes subdivisions shall be considered concurrently as a subdivision and PUD, and that's what you see before you tonight, is both of them being presented. And to add clarity on that, you see in the staff report, we have findings that were broken out for PUD and in subdivision findings. So when this comes back to you for the findings and conditions, there'll be two separate, one for the PUD and then one for the subdivision. The, I want to rehash everything that the applicant presented regarding the exceptions that were sought. I do want to mention, maybe I'll ask Justin to add clarification, since he's here in the side yard, the zero setback. So they would have to meet the building code if they're on a zero setback, but I don't know if you want to, what that...
We're actually on the International Building Code, and what it states is, is by state statutes, we can get down to three feet, and it has to stay three feet from the property line, or it would get a firewall there. So you couldn't take and put three foot to that property line and then add extra foot to the property next to it. It has to go to that property line from that building. So from each one would be separate from property line to property line.
On that three feet?
Correct.
Okay.
The flanking street, what's stated here isn't any different than what we permit currently in our code. One thing is a condition that would added clarity is staff added the condition that if a garage is fronting on a flanking street, that it would have to retain that 20-foot setback. So add a little clarity there. Also, the sidewalks shall be a minimum of five feet from the back of curb to provide for a planting strip. As you've seen in the staff report, Idaho Street, that was, it needs to maintain that six foot, and that was negotiated and kind of discussed with the urban foresters, to see if that would be palatable. Curbs, this really isn't an exception. That's an allowed use, so it's not really an exception, but it's okay to be on that list. The radius of 30 feet proposed on North Place Avenue and Sheldon Avenue on Idaho Street, that request, typically when you're connecting in a collector, that'd be a 35-foot radius. And as you've seen, the Engineering Division reviewed that, and they're, that's palatable. The 20 feet internally, that'd be typical for a local residential. In review of the 5,000 square feet, as stated as far as PUDs, typically with PUD requests, there's going to be some reasons for that, and this is obviously one of them, to have the potential for smaller lots. Also, the 50-foot in lot width, both those, they're not uncommon in Post Falls. There's quite a few lots that are 55, 60, 75, but it does add diversity and a range of housing types potentially. The proposed 4.23 dwelling units, that's less than the five dwelling units that's permitted outright for the R1 zoning district. And also, staff put a condition that the proposed park, though, would need to be completed prior to all future phases. So they could do the first phase, but they need to get that park done initially. In regards to the subdivision, we found that it was consistent with the proposed PUD and that the, and that would be compatible with the surrounding environment. Also, this subdivision is proposing no cul-de-sacs as part of the subdivision, so that's a little bit better than other subdivisions we've reviewed. One additional condition that's not in your staff report is, now, staff would recommend approving with this requested PUD is, I'll try to go to the next slide. This here is the Prairie Falls subdivision, and at this location, there's an existing 20-foot access easement. And we discussed this with the applicant a little bit, and what would be conditioning is that lots 25 and 26, they would also provide that 20-foot access easement, other than, it says 10 feet right here, but they would match the same easement that is on the receiving side. The reservation that the applicant had was, they wanted to make sure staff would then work on getting that fence that kind of would block that connectivity. So staff would coordinate getting the opening, but at that appropriate phase, then that connection would need to be established. The purpose of that would be to connect this neighborhood and subdivision to that already pre-existing thought-out easement, so it was there for a purpose, to, down at this corner, there's a golf cart, so it just connects the community to the golf course. Engineering Division reviewed this and have no issues with the requested exceptions. Through the PUD request, once again, that the planter strip shall remain at six feet wide at city standard along Idaho Street. Regards to water, that there's capacity to provide service, and for the water reclamation facility, there's capacity to provide service to this as well. Police have commented, and they have no comments or concerns with the proposal, and we heard no other comments from any other agencies. So I'd stand for any questions you have for me at this point in time.
Questions for John?
I have a quick question on the park location. That will be used by the public. So is there going to be any parking area? I mean, Idaho is a busy street, especially in the mornings and the afternoons.
Other than, at this point in time...
Most of the time, I mean, a lot of PUDs, you don't, they don't allow street parking.
This right here is a city street, so...
Just be parking on the street?
That's what's being proposed at this point in time.
And that park is actually going, that park will not be turned over to the city, correct? That's actually maintained?
Yeah, it'll be privately owned and maintained by the HOA.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for John?
Yeah, I had, just to clarify, the city, in one of the conditions, wanted to add that lots 25 and 26 would require an additional easement?
Yeah, they would, that they would provide the additional 20-foot easement.
20-foot easement.
And improve that connectivity with its applicable or appropriate phase. And then staff would then, in return, work on getting that fence unblocked or that corridor cleared.
Okay, lots 25 and 26.
Yeah, between, yeah.
Okay.
Any other question for John? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to take public testimony. Kelly, do we have anyone to sign up to speak in favor of?
We do not.
Okay, how about neutral?
We do not.
How about opposed?
We do not.
Okay. For the commission's purposes, there is one letter of comment in our packet. You should have all had opportunity to read that, and that one is in opposition. I'll just say that for the record. So at this point, we have no testimony, so we don't have any need for rebuttal. Any other questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it up for discussion. Start with Nancy.
It makes sense to have a subdivision there. It's kind of a missing piece. My biggest concern would be the lot size in the frontage, just reducing the lot size down to 5,000 square feet. But overall, I think the project makes sense.
Greg?
Makes sense. Does it fill in that we'd like to see?
Personally, I like the infill. I like the subdivision layout, keeping in mind that, as I reviewed the lots, there's only a few of them that are at the 5,000 square foot. Most of them are larger than that, so there's a variety of lot sizes in there, which I kind of like, and I think from the developer's standpoint, that's a good asset there, so I like the subdivision.
Ryan?
I think as we continue to grow, that word growth is always going to bring a certain degree of controversy, and people, you know, sometimes get a little concerned with that. But when you look at that particular piece and the fact that it's a, you know, a great piece for infill, I mean, to me, the R1, it's a natural fit.
Ryan, or Greg?
Oh, you're not, I'm sorry.
I'm using myself.
Okay.
I kind of agree with Nancy. My only concern was with a smaller lot size, but it does appear that that's kind of the trend now, especially with the cost of land and everything, so overall, I think it fits good. It's a good fill for that little area there.
Okay, thank you. At this point, then, I'd look for a motion.
See if we can make this work. I move to recommend approval of North Place Preliminary PUD, P-1503, and North Place Subdivision S-1502, and recommend the adoptions and the findings, PUD findings 1 through 14, and subdivision findings 1 through 8, and conclusions and conditions, PUD conditions 1 through 8, to include the lot 25 and 26, 20-foot easement, and improved connectivity and subdivision conditions 1 through 12, contained in the staff report, and ask that it moves forward.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Kelly, roll call, please.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Orders?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Staff comments.
One comment for you from me. I wanted to give you a heads up that in January, you're going to be hearing, rehearing, I should say, the Port of Hope Special Use Permit. They had appealed that decision after I got on the payroll here. We took a look at the application. There were some processing issues that I was concerned about, and so generally, I was concerned about the defensibility of the decision based on a number of factors. And so the cleanest way to address that is frankly to essentially have a mulligan, a do-over. We've renotified this matter, so notice has gone back out to the neighborhood. We'll have a new hearing in January. The decision in January would be made on the record created in January, not what happened last two months ago, I guess, at this point, so look forward to that.
Russ, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, how about commission comments?
Good job on the motion.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
I just have one, and I want to thank the staff and the commission. This will be my last meeting, so I'll be moving on, but I appreciate everybody's help, input, your dedication to the city, because it takes everybody to make it work. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
With that, we need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. We're adjourned.